Okay, I'd like to start the December 12th, 2023 Auburn Main Planning Board meeting. I'll start with Agenda Item Number One. Roll call from my left.
Riley Bergeron.
Amanda Garret.
Dave Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Evan Seer.
Tim DeRoche.
Tony Ferraro.
And as Ms. LeBlanc and Mr. Finnegan are absent this evening, I'm elevating Tim DeRoche and Amanda Garret to full members this evening. And moving on, Agenda Item Number Two, are the meeting minutes from November 14th, 2023? Do I have any amendments to the meeting minutes?
Seeing that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All's in favor? Motion passes. Seven zero. Agenda Item Number Three is a public hearing to change the official zoning map for three parcels on Riverside Drive from AGRP to LDCR or RR. This item was tabled at the last meeting. I'll hand it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you guys know, back in November, the Board essentially tabled this parcel to be changed from agricultural to rural residential, being that the lot basically sits between two other lots that are essentially agricultural land. So what we've done is we've included not only the original lot, which was parcel ID 174-04401 and 174-00402, so we've added those and 174-004. And then what we did and what wasn't done before was that we followed the annual chance for flood hazard line, the .2% line, and again, increasing the lots of 174-04002 and 174-004 to create connectivity in the existing zones to align better with our comprehensive plan. So essentially what we're doing is we're not creating any kind of spot zoning there. That totals about 6.7 acres. If you take the balance of what was originally presented and then take the flood zone out and then add these two lots, we're essentially getting 6.7 additional acres. So the total zone change in consideration now is about 18.2 plus or minus acres in those three lots. So I think that's pretty much all we do have. Again, this was originally by a petition. It did have the required signatures to move forward for a petition, and we're just looking for the Board to essentially approve or not approve this particular project. Notices were sent. It doesn't feel like there's going to be any detriment to city resources. And this generally meets the future land use plan pattern of development where we're trying to push any of the additional development towards the city. This is kind of an outlier parcel of agricultural land in the area, and it is outside of the Lake Auburn watershed.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the Board for staff?
I do. John, I know last we tabled this because we were concerned about the spot zoning, but yet I had also thought that maybe because it was brought to us that there might have had--
Legal counsel.
Yeah, we have not talked to legal counsel specifically about it. It was being treated unusually for the area before. There's very little risk that this would be considered spot zoning. You'd have to have it isolated from another similar zone, and you would also have to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And the comp plan supports residential zoning along Riverside Drive in this area. It's actually unusual. If Catherine has the GIS open, we couldn't figure out why this particular lot was treated differently than some of the other lots to the south of it. It was left out of the residential zone. From what we could learn in talking with the property owner is that the property owner at the time was opposed to it being included, and counsel decided not to include it. But it is not spot zoning for you to either zone one of those or all of those, the way that we've treated the other lots.
Okay, so, because I think the original concern when it came up since it was just a single lot was that it might be spot zoning, but you're saying that it would not be if we decided just to leave--
There's more argument than it is if it's a single lot, but we don't think that a court would find that it is in either case.
So I do, I wish we had gotten specific legal. I appreciate staff's opinion on that. But in looking at the comp plan, I do have a question. The 2021 comp plan still has that area identified as ag. And I think back to our, several years ago, when we looked at Woodbury Heights, and it was understood that Woodbury Heights, that property probably was meant to be rural residential, but was still identified as ag. And the process that we needed to follow in that case was to amend the comp plan prior to making the zone change. And I'm asking, I guess I'm wondering why, having had some more time to digest this and look at it as possibly a larger parcel, why that wouldn't be the case here?
We could certainly follow that process. We do have residential zoning along part of this frontage already, and the comp plan lines, as you know, are general development patterns. They're not exact, but you certainly could amend the future land use map as well. We don't think you have to, but we could certainly do that.
I ask because the law is pretty clear that you can't do something that's contrary, you can't create development that's contrary to your comp plan. I know you didn't talk to legal about the idea about spot zoning, but has there been any discussion with legal as of late with regard to the concept of how loosely one can treat the comp plan in terms of boundaries? I know that it's not a, it's not meant to be, you know, ways and means, per se, sort of lines, but one would assume that a comp plan that is drawn along about, like a lot line, that the intent was that it be drawn along that lot line?
Yeah, and again, it's a general boundary, a general development pattern. Certainly could propose that there also be an amendment to the future land use plan, but I don't think you have to. That's up to the Board.
There is also the legal obligation of the petition and following through on that piece as well. We did use specific language in the staff report as generally following the comp plan. You know, there could be arguments going either way. I think that, you know, good planning is what came out of the discussion from last meeting, and that is following the flood zone, creating connectivity. I think those are all good management styles for planning, good planning. And, you know, from my perspective, I think even though there may be a gap, if we're looking at the comp plan 100% in that it wasn't identified, I agree with you on that, Evan. I did look at that. I didn't ignore it. But I thought that this was the best step forward based on the petition and what we were proposed with for, you know, advancing the petition.
Legal requirements of petition are that we have this hearing, right?
Is he here? What's the question?
The legal, you said the legal, there's also legal requirements of this petition, the legal requirements of petition that we have a public hearing about it.
That's correct.
Which we had tabled and are having again.
That is correct.
So we've met.
We've met it, but yeah, right. So there has to be a decision by the Board essentially.
No more questions? Okay, with that, I'll seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Second.
So if anybody from the public would like to speak, step up to the podium, state your name, address, and you have five minutes to address the Board.
Good evening. Kathy Shaw, 1200 Sopers Mill Road. It's not going to take me five minutes. Thank you, though. I am just fundamentally opposed to removing our natural resource and ag land from this zoning. I just think we don't have much, and every time you chip away at 10, 20, 15 acres, it reduces what we have for natural resources and ag protection. So I just am opposed. Thank you.
Amy Rousseau, 745 West Auburn Road. I think that all of the things that you mentioned about it not being in the land use and it being tabled last time, I don't think that this is a good fit. I don't think I agree with Kathy that you can't just keep whittling and whittling and whittling our resource protection and for development. And I just
Seeing no one else from the public wants to speak, I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved. Second.
All's in favor? Motion passes. So I'll open up to the Board to discuss or answer any questions from the public.
There were no questions from the public. I think staff is right in stating that the comp plan identifies that there should be residential development along Riverside Drive. My personal opinion is that essentially that means that the comp plan map is not in alignment with the stated goals. And my personal preference would be to make sure that if we are doing something, that we are doing something through process. This is something that the Board has done before. I understand that it might be irksome to a landowner who that wants to see an answer or an outcome right away, but that it's important that the Board does its business correctly and follows process. And I appreciate staff's sentiment that rezoning this does fit with the intent of the comp plan. I think this is a case similar to Woodbury where the intent of the comp plan and the comp plan map itself, the future land use map itself are just not aligned, and I think that we should button it up. That's my two
What's the current process for, I believe we've got an agenda item later on to start the dialogue about reviewing the comp plan? Is that correct?
One is to review some of the zoning changes that the Board's already talked about. I mean, you could certainly table this again and vote to initiate a consideration of the comp plan amendment at the next planning board meeting. That would be one option. And wait until that's considered before you act on this item.
I'd be more in favor of following that process that Evan described and starting that as well. Catherine, could you zoom out on that map again, please? Playing devil's advocate concerning the lots in question here, it could be argued that those were spot zoned ag at some point in time relative to the surrounding zone. In reading the petition, the property owner states has not been used as ag in 30 years. I would assume that, being a petition, that there cannot be false statements and stuff like that. But I'd just like to raise the point, just by visually looking at the map, one could contend that they had been spot zoned and rural residential converting it, allowing the zone change could resolve what had been a spot zoning at one point in time. I just want to put that out there.
Which section is the petition coming from? End, middle?
It's 174-00401 is the parcel ID number. Catherine, if you could--
And I think Mr. DeRoche brings up an important point. It's very clear that that was just left as an island unto itself, which is why I think that should be resolved. My personal opinion is that it should be resolved by, or amending the comp plan to reflect what the comp plan says it's trying to accomplish. My fear would be that someone with standing could come back and say, "This change is not conforming with the future land use map," although it is conforming with the language of the comp plan. And whenever we have sort of gray area like that, I think it behooves us to make sure that if we believe that this should become rural residential, that we do so in such a manner that we don't leave, that we don't leave it open to possible litigation or confusion. So I 100% agree with Mr. DeRoche. I think it was an error to leave it out of rural residential, so.
I just have a question out of curiosity. Why is, on the suggested findings, that the zone change will occur outside of the Lake Auburn watershed included? Like, this is way outside of the Lake Auburn watershed. Why is that pertinent?
There's a moratorium on that, on our ag land. I just wanted to identify it for the public, so the public could know.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to table this item and to simultaneously initiate a comprehensive future land use map review with the intent of determining whether or not these parcels should be included in rural residential in alignment with the language of the comp plan.
Any discussion? All's in favor? All is opposed? Item four on the agenda is to consider granting a variance to continue a formerly lawfully non-conforming home with a new apiary. I'll ask staff to provide an update and review on the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for Kevin Driscoll and David Pascal. They're requesting the planning board to consider, as you said, granting a variance to continue a formerly lawfully non-conforming home with a new apiary, essentially, which is a bee farm at 170 Corner Road. City assessor's parcel ID 137030. This proposal's pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 2, Agriculture Resource Protection District, Section 6078, 6079, and 65, 60-1277. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that does allow a property to request a variance from the planning board if the lot and structure was established prior to 1960. This lot has a property tax cards going back to 1953. The applicant has submitted a site plan to address review concerns from staff and planning board considerations to meet the requirements under 60-79. The existing home on the site was removed and abandoned in 2007, showing past use as a residential lot. The current lot is 12.45 acres, and the planned use of one single level residential home will not create or utilize more than 5,457 square feet of impervious area. The total cleared area for the home driveway, the bee farm, the bee section, septic system, well, and lawn area is just under one acre of land. We went through each of the site plan criteria, just to kind of go over it. We looked at adjacent areas against, you know, surface water, drainage, buffers, artificial and reflective light. The home is going to meet all the setback requirements. It's compatible with the neighborhood. The applicant is choosing to utilize the past disturbed area of the home and existing buffer will remain. It's actually, the buffer is indicated on the site plan. You can see where the, basically, the open area is, where there's existing gravel pad, where the proposed home is going to go. And this, it does, they did do a subsurface wastewater design for it, and that is located on the site plan. Road entrances and setbacks are on there as well. There doesn't appear to be any kind of environmental constraints that may affect the site or the abutters. We looked at site distance for the driveway with curb cuts, with over 500 feet of site distance from either direction. I talked briefly already about the disposal of waste for the property. They're going to use a subsurface wastewater system. That design is included in your packet and also indicated on the site plan. The environmental features on the site and adjacent areas, again, no negative impacts. They are considering, there is, it's not necessarily in the city's business to get into their deed, but there is a covenant based on this parcel of land, which is kind of interesting, and included in your packet that they do have to have some type of agricultural use. It doesn't necessarily fall under the ordinance, per se, or the ordinance purview, but it is interesting that they need to provide some type of agricultural use, and they're choosing to do bees. And just a comment about bees and how they are positive impact for the surrounding farms and the surrounding open space that's around Staff recommends that the Board review the proposal pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 2, and then Section 60 and 78, 6079, and provide a decision to the applicant. I couldn't find any reason why we couldn't build a home here, but ultimately, this is a decision of the Board.
Does the Board have any questions for staff?
Yes, I do. What's preventing, I think you just answered it, what's preventing a single-family home from being built on that property outside of a deed covenant that is not ag-related? Is there any reason why they could not build and just have a single-family home and just live their merry life without that?
So in the ag zone, as you know, there's no income requirement, but there is a pretty clear indication that we have to have natural resources, an agricultural use, or recreation use for the public. They did start the conversation, we did start the conversation as just a bee farm or just an apiary, but staff didn't feel that that was 100% meeting the goal of what the ag zone meant. So we looked, we wanted to make sure we covered all those bases and not go through a more risky process versus this is, we've had existing use here. There's a process for it, and we let the Board decide, and we just, we also let them know that there is going to be some agricultural use on the site. I thought it was the best of both worlds. I think this is a considerable investment to redevelop this site for this individual, these folks, and we thought this was probably the best process to go forward.
Thank you. And that launches my next question. Hypothetically, say we approve it, they build, they have their bees and their goats. Two years down the road, for whatever reason, that stops. Have we, what mechanism do we have to ensure that that property continues to operate in the understanding of what we're being presented today? Because what we're being presented today is asking permission for this variance, and part of that application is bees, goats. Okay. Now, if the bees and goats stops for whatever reason, where does that leave us liability-wise? Where does that leave the property in regards to conformance?
Yep, and that's a continued thing that we're going to have to face, no matter where, if anyone develops in the ag zone, is that, are they going to continue to do something? But in this particular case, we're just identifying that, but it's not a requirement because there has been past use there. So there's not a legal, there's no traction for the city to say, "Well, you've got, you don't have your bee farm, or you don't have the goats." You know, there has to be some type of, say, enforcement or something like that. In this case, there isn't one because we're really going for the variance piece. We're just identifying that it's in the deed, it's a requirement, and that's why it's in here. But it was just, I guess, a side note that as the Board decides to approve these or disapprove these, or as staff goes forward and has the ability to approve these, we really got to make sure that the person that is developing the lot is really going to move forward with an agricultural use, natural resource use, or recreation use. I think that that needs to be clear, and staff needs to be comfortable with that. I guess there's, there may be different opinions among us, the staff, which is fine, everybody has opinions. But there, there has to be a certain amount of comfort level, particularly with the first one, right? So I think you open up an interesting dialogue for what happens next in a different situation, but here, that doesn't necessarily apply.
Thank you, John. Without risk, you'd never have growth, anyway.
I think this entire discussion, I just heard it sort of conflates two different things. We are not-- We are not reviewing something under ag land use. We are not, this request has nothing to do with whether they are doing something with agriculture with their land. This has nothing to do with natural resource protection. This is a request for a variance, and so I think it's important that we not conflate the two. Having said that, my question for staff is, clearly, there is one piece that wasn't met. Okay? And this is going to be, and this is a long one, Section 60-145A, 1B2I. And this is the only reason why I could find why staff would have not just approved this under the ordinance that has already been enacted. Okay? And it's that the business or proposed land use is feasible and if implemented will constitute a bona fide farming, agriculture, recreational, or natural resource use allowed under either subsection A permitted uses or subsection B special exception uses of this section. Right? So, since we've already chosen to conflate the two, and I'm saying, I'm going to contradict myself at this point, I would like to know why this is in front of the planning board to begin with. I would assume, given that we're talking about someone who plans on raising bees, my understanding is that there's been an apiary farm approved less than a mile away. Apiary farm being a farm growing herbs and flowers, proposed processing. Why this would not be an obvious natural fit with that? And so, I bring this up right now at the risk of continuing to conflate the two items to say, I don't understand why the planning board is taking this up to begin with. It irks me that we're using a backdoor variance process to allow something that's clearly obviously already allowed in the zoning ordinance. So, that's my two cents on that one.
So, I would just say, I keep hearing the word variance. This is not a variance. The variance standards are very specific. There's an allowance for the planning board to allow somebody to reestablish and abandon non-conforming use. That's what the request is.
Yeah, I apologize. You are correct. We are not discussing a variance. We are, we are allowing essentially continued use of a, of a, of a non-conforming.
And abandoned use to be reestablished.
Right.
So, I just, for the record, I wanted to make sure that was.
And thank, thank you for the correction.
It did say variance in the staff report, too.
It does.
I think it was missed, we misused it there.
But, thank you, that is an important distinction to make. My statement still stands, I don't understand why this is in front of us to begin with.
I know from the review that it was my opinion that a few beehives didn't meet the test of an agricultural use. So, we went over all of the possibilities that this potential property owner, this buyer, has. We could have said, they could have finalized their application. We as staff being, and me individually, I believe this, that it didn't meet the test of being an agricultural use that met the standard of the ordinance. We talked to the applicant about adding some additional agricultural use, so it was slightly more substantial than a few beehives. They would like to do that someday but couldn't commit to it in the short term. So, we went over all of the options that they had. We could have denied that application and then let the Board of Appeals review that because that's the fail-safe. If, as staff tries to figure out exactly what the expectation is for the level of agricultural natural resource-based use on these really marginal ones that are very small agricultural natural resource-based uses, the Board of Appeals gets to make that decision. The other one, because this parcel had a reference in the deed to specifically allow for a single-family home, which is not something that the city enforces or guarantees, it also had a permit that was issued after the house was built to replace a house on this lot. So, there was a clear recognition in the file, in the documentation, that the city considered this to be a formerly lawfully non-conforming use that was going to be allowed to be replaced, and then for whatever reason, the owner didn't follow through with that, but we did issue a building permit. It was fully reviewed. That this was a pretty unique situation where they had more than one option to pursue, and they chose to pursue this option instead of staff denying the permit and going to the Board of Appeals. And we thought they had a better chance, given the history at the property with this process than that anyways. But they had more than one because of the really unique.
I understand that. This city only allows like eight beehives to begin with, so now you're holding it against, how big, how big do you want them to be? Well, they're already limited. And this is adjacent to, to the law packet composting site. Quite frankly, I don't want to see any agriculture that's going to till soil on this lot. I guess, you know what? I will stop Eric because this is a conversation that maybe is not pertinent and appropriate to this specific topic, and I'm recognizing that as I'm getting deeper. There's a personal frustration with how this was handled, and I will back off.
There was a comment about there being something in, within the deed itself that was unusual. Can you point that back out again? What was that?
Are you looking at the deed itself?
Yeah, there was a comment, I think that there was something unique about the deed with regard to ag and needing to have a.
Yeah, so there is, there is some requirements. So, 2.2 under Exhibit 2 in the deed, "Single family, the property shall remain an active agricultural site. No more than one single-family residential dwelling shall be located on the property at any one time." So, I, that, I would, I'd, I'd just point that out as that's something that's quite unique in a deed, and it was part of the packet. Total right and interest is probably one of the first things that we ask for in any one development project for a site plan review, so I just figured I'd point it out. It's a requirement of the deed.
So, how does the deed interpret a active agricultural site?
It, it doesn't, and I apologize because I continued that discussion, and I realized that, I pointed out that we're completing the two, and then I decided to get upset about something that can be taken care of in the office, but it doesn't matter what the deed says. We are not approving this based on whether or not they are doing anything based on agriculture or not. We are simply going through a process that the planning board can do, which is to grant a continuance of a non-conforming use. The house was previously non-conforming. If the staff believes that their agricultural use doesn't meet muster, then they would continue to be non-conforming. So, they are simply asking us, is one of the things that we can do, it doesn't come up very often at all, but to allow for a continuance of a non-conforming use so that this house would be built, it would continue to be non-conforming, there would be no requirement that they do anything within the ordinance.
Okay, I'll seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
All is in favor.
Second, yeah.
All is in favor. Step to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. Excuse me. Mr. Seer is correct. This process is all convoluted and is not correct. This really isn't a request for a variance, as a couple of people, including the staff, have said. What it is, is a request to not even continue an existing or previous non-conforming use. It's an attempt to springboard to a new use, not the previous non-conforming use. The residence on this parcel was non-conforming when the residence was removed in 2007. Under our ordinances, the title is continuance, but what it really is, is a section relating to non-conforming uses, 6078. And a non-conforming use is one which existed before September 14, 1960, or otherwise was approved by the planning board, or it could have been approved by a variance at that time, but that variance is not the mechanism for doing anything with it at this time. So, the next topic is, how long did this use remain discontinued after 2007, and what's the effect of that? The ordinance in Section 6081 says that if a non-conforming use of a building or portion thereof, et cetera, is discontinued for a period of 12 consecutive months duration, or is more or less voluntarily discontinued, it is presumed to be abandoned. And such use, and that's a key word, such use shall not be resumed, and only a use conforming with the zoning provisions in the zoning district in which it is located shall thereafter be made, except as permitted under a couple of exceptions that I'll get to in a second. So, this use was abandoned at the most recent in 2008, a year after the use was discontinued. It's been an abandoned use for 15-plus years. What is to happen with this long-since-abandoned use now? The use which is presently being sought is not a resumption of such use, which was previously only a residence, but it's now alleged to be an apiary or beekeeping establishment with an accessory house that's supposed to be accessory to that use. It isn't the same use at all. So, therefore, that provision permitting resumption of a, an existing or previously existing use is inapplicable. You then get forwarded to the site location section of the ordinances, which says that the use of a property, a building, that was used lawfully non-conforming manner and which was abandoned, may be permitted after approval by the planning board in accordance with Division 2 of Section 6, Article 16, which is the site location section. The site location section relates to the design and layout of certain developments permitted by special exceptions or other developments noted herein. There are no other developments. This is purported to be brought forth as a special exception. The great irony here is that beekeeping or apiaries are not a special exception in the AGRP zone. You all may remember that there was a great deal of discussion last spring over what of the re, total restructuring of the ag zone ordinance, which was accomplished in a very cooperative manner between the staff and a private ag group, of which I was a member, after numerous discussions. And when that matter came before you, and on June 6, our ag group felt there were still a couple of provisions that should be added to provide for other forms of use other than pure farming. I stood up on behalf of the group and proposed six or seven such proposals. Some of them were concurrent and virtually identical with Mr. Seer's proposals made at the same time. Then there were a couple of other incidental ones. I made each one of those proposals individually. A member of the board made a motion with respect to each of those proposals individually, and they were virtually all accepted with one exception, beekeeping. This board affirmatively declined to include beekeeping as a permitted use. The way to bring this thing to a correct position is to dismiss this thing, have the applicants come forward with a new proposal, not attempting to convolute it into a side door representation of an old use, and seek approval of an apiary farm with adequate substantive support. Other people here tonight may question whether that proposal is actually a proposed correct agricultural use or not. Thank you.
Kathy Shaw, 1200 Sopers Mill Road, Auburn, Maine. This is just a house lot. This is what they want to build. They don't want to do bees, Nigerian dwarf goats. They just want to build a house. That's it. And they've found exceptions to make it look a little bit more natural resource ag-friendly. They just wanted, they just want to build a house. Bottom line. There's no, there's no business plan with this. This is three sentences on a letter asking for consideration. The other question that I have about this is, this is surrounded by Lopka land, a lot of sludge, a lot of PFAS they're discovering now, and I don't know, as a residence, being built there would be appropriate with the cancer issues and the possible remediation. Don't know if there was ever any sludge spread on that piece of property because it is heavily wooded, but there is PFAS all around it. And there was some mention of tilling the land. You don't till land with bees, you don't have to. They are in boxes, and they forage for their foods. Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep. So, three hives, six hives, 12 hives? That makes an apiary? I would consider an apiary to be more than 15 or 20. On our property, at times of the year, we have routinely 15 or more hives trucked in to do pollination. So, what they're asking for is really just a house. That's all. That's what they want. I would ask that you set this aside for tonight for further consideration. Thank you.
I live on 336 South Witherham Road in Auburn. I, I had two farms on Pendlecon Road. I farmed it for 50 years. When we first bought it, I could have moved in there and not farmed. And I, I, I could have stayed there, but I farmed it. I'm 70 years old now, and I have no family to leave it to. I got one niece I would like to give it to. She doesn't want it, she doesn't want the burden. I own 250 acres or more there. And if I can't sell it, what do you want me to do with it? Thank you. Consider the old people when, when their time is up. That's all I'm asking you. Thank you.
Chris Carson, Jakes Road, Auburn, Maine. I just wanted to second what Eric was saying earlier. I think it would be helpful in the future for these type of things to have an idea of the thresholds that planning board or the city staff feel are legitimate for apiaries and other types of farms so that this isn't something that people have to guess at. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
John Cleveland, 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I want to make just two relatively brief comments here. First of all, what has been advertised for a public hearing here, as you've alluded to, is asking the planning board if, under the, we, under the guidelines in the zoning ordinance, they can recreate a non, a non-conforming use that was abandoned in 2007, 2008. The ordinance is very clear. You've got a year to go ahead and do that. It has been way beyond that year. You have a period in which you can exercise that right. Whatever happened, it was not exercised. You cannot resurrect that at this point. Your ordinance says you can't do that. Let me make a second point. This is a public hearing advertised for the point I just discussed. It is. It has not been advertised in regards to whether it meets the requirements of new agricultural and resource protection ordinance. And therefore, since you have not advertised it for that, and the public has not been aware, made aware, that that would be a basis on which to take some action, your own counsel has said in the past, you can't act on something you haven't notified the public about. So that second piece of it is not even allowable here because it's not advertised for that purpose. I think, and I'll make this one final point. Even though you can't do that, in the future, when issues come before you on whether an agricultural use or other permitted kinds of use meets the bona fide requirement in the ordinance, there ought to be some reasonable standards that all people can reasonably understand, the applicants and the staff, et cetera, or the planning board if it comes before you. You have to proceed with this kind of discussion when it's properly before you with great caution, because the first one is going to set the standard. And if you set it incorrectly, you could have the result of perhaps intentionally or unintentionally undermining the whole purpose of the bona fide requirement for the use. So I hope that you'll consider all of that carefully.
Chelsea Eaton, 576 Trap Road. I had a few comments prepared, and I think generally, everybody that's already been up has kind of touched on it, but I wanted to elaborate on a couple of things. We've talked about the 2007, you know, being, you know, 15-plus years ago, and that there's the one-year standard. So I think it would be, for whatever reason, that's in the, whatever the variance is, it would just be inappropriate to approve it based, based on that. I mean, anybody who has, who can show that there once was a residence on their property could then come and argue that they ought to be able to build a house there. I mean, my, so my property has a granite foundation on it from a house that was there that burned down, I think in the 50s. So I, maybe I'm not understand all the, understanding all the technical lingo about what's happening, but if, if this gets approved, why can't I then come and say, well, that, why can't I build a house where that foundation is on my property that burned down in the Generally, I agree that, I don't know why the planning board is, I think Evan, I kind of, I think I kind of agreed with what Evan said. Why, why is the planning board discussing the bee part of it? I think with the, the new ag ordinance that we all went through earlier this year, then the proposal B that got passed, there's clear wording in there that says a property owner has to show intent to have a bona fide agricultural operation in order to receive a, a building permit, to build a house. And with respect, I, I don't think you can consider...
You're out of time.
Don't I have five minutes? Did I talk for five minutes already? Well, there ought to be a clock here with a second hand on it, so people can understand.
Oh.
Oh. Did you mess up?
I was gonna say...
We might have messed up on this time, or sorry. It didn't feel like flag.
My apologies.
To me either.
My apologies.
I'm sorry.
That really didn't feel...
My clock is different than everybody else's.
That's why you get two clocks going.
I, I do think there needs to be a clock here with a second hand, though, so people can keep track. But I guess I need to, I do need to be quicker, but bona fide agricultural operations, so I, I, I think there's a ton of work still to be done between the staff and citizens and the planning board to determine what is going to constitute a bona fide agricultural operation, whether we're talking about bees, or cows, or growing trees, or doing maple What I would recommend about bees, whether we, whether we can maybe table this matter and give the staff some time to do this research, I would say, send an email to the Maine State Beekeepers Association, because they're awesome to talk to, and this would be, I think, very easy for you to do, and find out what the average number of hives that a honey producer, even as, you know, a small-scale honey producer in southern Maine has. And I can guarantee you it's more than six. I would think it's probably dozens. And tho, and those hives would not be on one property. There's no way you can put enough honeybee hives on one property to constitute a honey operation, because it just, there's not enough forage for that many bees. What would be more legitimate is if somebody came to the staff with a plan to have a honey processing facility on, if you guys had a proposal before you for a honey processing facility that was maybe a 40 by 40 barn that had a centrifuge and a bottling operation and an extraction equipment, that would be a really legitimate, that would prove to me that, okay, this person is serious about doing an ag operation. They've got plans for this honey operation. So I, I definitely would recommend that the staff email the Maine State Beekeepers Association to at least get some standards for anybody that comes before you about bees. And I think that'd be really easy to do. And in general, I think this should be tabled until next month or something, and, and... Yeah, and I don't, I don't understand why this is before the planning board, and I, I don't think it should be approved. Thank you.
Seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor. So at this time, we'll open it up to the board to address any questions from the public, or even probably go back to staff a little bit with some ideas that were proposed.
So nobody else wants to ask, I'm certainly gonna follow up. Both Mr. Beal and Mr. Cleveland, certainly there were a number of people that, that stated with regard to the non-conforming discontinuance after 12 months and it falling outside, so therefore, we're not able to even consider that. Could somebody clarify what the language is and whether that's, I see it, I think I see it up on the, on the board.
Yeah, so the language says, "The use of any property or building that formerly was used in a lawfully non-conforming manner and which was abandoned, as defined in Section 60-81," which says, "for a period of 12 months, may be permitted after approval by the planning board in accordance with Division 2, Article 16 of this chapter." So the provision allows the planning board to continue a formerly lawfully non-conforming use that has passed the period of 12 months. If it was within 12 months, staff by themselves can insate a building permit, and it wouldn't need approval.
Is this a new property owner?
Yes.
As, as of when?
The property's for sale, and I believe somebody has it under contract, but I don't think they've purchased it yet. Mr. Goethe here, that spoke as a farmer from that area, is the seller of the parcel.
So these people may not buy a property in Auburn if this does not go through?
They may not, yep. They could either look somewhere else in Auburn, but they won't have a home on their property in Auburn. And I would, if I could, just elaborate a little bit on what Catherine had for an answer for David's last question. The next section that Mr. Beal referenced is 60-81, that lays out that 12-month discontinuance and then abandonment after 12 months. And then it says that the only way to provide an exception to that is through that section that Catherine referenced and the one above it.
So we, we have this, we're following this method because we do believe that it applies to this, to this case. This is an abandoned use that, that we think can be continued through this manner if this is what the board wants. There are other ways too, but that's the way we have tonight.
Do we know what the previous use of the house that was there, that was then abandoned, was, given that it needed to be agricultural in nature, given the deed?
I will point out that the deed was, there was a restrictive covenant that was put on the lot by LOPCA as non-developable in '07 when they demoed it. It was only until, you'd have to read it, but I think 2021, where they revised this, and LOPCA released the lot and its restrictive covenants on it, and they put the agricultural uses and things like that. I think, I think it was just a, looked like a residential home, was a small, very small Cape looking home. I, I don't know for sure if it was for folks that were working in the area farms that supported that, or if it was just a residential home.
More to the point, the city doesn't enforce deed restrictions. That comes down to tort law. So if I felt that my neighbor was violating a deed restriction, I don't go to the city, I go to the courts. The, the city, but the city, there are some, there are some municipalities that do choose to involve themselves with that. Auburn chooses not to.
I would agree with that.
So I just pulled up an aerial image, an aerial image from 2006 of the house. That's what it looked like.
Any more questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to decline a residential home at 170 Penley Quarter Road, City Assessor's Parcel ID 137-030. This proposal is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 2, Agriculture and Resource Protection District, Section 60-78 and 60-79-5 and 60-1277, on account of being more than 12 months abandoned in accordance with Section 60-81.
I had a question about wording. Do not appro, what, do you say do not approve?
To decline the request in, on the account of more than 12 months abandoned in accordance
I would second that with the, with a change just for it to say, to not approve opposed to decline.
Good with that. Want me to restate it?
Procedure.
I make a motion to not approve a residential home at 170 Penley Quarter Road, City Assessor's Parcel ID 137-030. The proposal pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 2, Agriculture and Resource Protection District, Section 60-78 and 60-79, Paragraph 5 and 60-1277, on account of being more than 12 months abandoned in accordance with Section 60-81.
Any discussion?
So my discussion would be the following. The staff has made it clear, so it says, I will read it in its entirety. "If any non-conforming use of a building or portion thereof, or land or portion thereof, is discontinued for a period of 12 consecutive months duration, or more, or is voluntarily discontinued, it shall be presumed abandoned. Such use shall not be resumed, and only a use conforming with the zoning provisions in the zoning district in which, should say, in which it is located, shall thereafter be made of such building or land." So it's saying, after 12 months, you can only do what's allowed under the zoning, except as may be permitted otherwise, under Section 60-79-4 and 5. And 79-5 says, the use, so after 12 months, it's done. It has to conform to zoning, unless the use of any property or building desire not to approve this, I think that individuals who do not want to approve it need to identify specific reasons why they don't want to approve this, because the zoning ordinance clearly gives us the authority to do this.
I wasn't gonna go there, but you bring up a valid point. Another one of my concerns was potential PFAS contaminations and exposure to the environment and atmosphere.
I guess, for me, I, I understand certainly the, the issues and the concerns with PFAS. I look at that as if the home, if the potential buyer is willing to buy it, knowing that that might be there, then that's their right to do, versus us telling them they shouldn't have the ability to buy it. So that's just my, my thoughts on the PFAS argument. I think a, a different argument could potentially be made that, that if we, that we would like to see it leveraged and actually used as agricultural, and we have provisions to allow for a home to be built in the ag zone if an ag use is actually presented, and if that's, the intent is to buy the property to put a home on it, there is an avenue with which they can do that, but that is not what we're being asked to present tonight.
Right. So...
Evan? So procedurally, though, we have, we have a, a seconded motion on the table. Can that still be amended? Could I amend the motion? Before I do that. The section of the ordinance you just referenced does say that it could come before the planning board, and we could rule it as non-conforming to the current zone. So with that in mind, I make a motion to not approve a residential home at 170 Penley Corner Road, City Assessor? No, sorry. I would like to amend the current motion to read, I make a motion to approve the residential home, I make a motion to not approve a residential home at 170 Penley Corner Road, City Assessor's Parcel ID 137-030. This proposal is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 2, Agriculture and Resource Protection District, Section 60-78 and 60-79, Article 5 and 60-1277, citing that the proposed motion would not be congruent with the current zoning of agricultural use.
I didn't hear the last part. I'm sorry.
I think you need to, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask some clarifying questions. It sounds to me like you said, what you said basically was, correct me if I'm wrong, it shouldn't be approved because, it shouldn't be approved as a non-conforming use because... it shouldn't be approved as a non-conforming use because it would be non-conforming is essentially what you said. Or what you is, are you trying to say it shouldn't be approved because there's already a reasonable mechanism for approval under the ordinance?
Not necessarily because we have that discussion about beekeeping and the, and the thresholds of what is considered beekeeping. So I would just say that it is, you're right. That might need to be reworded, but that is non-conforming with the current zoning. The proposed use is non-conforming with the current zoning. Would be my reasoning for making the motion to not approve it.
Could I make a suggestion on the type of finding? That, that, that allowance requires you to find that it meets the objectives of site plan review, twelve seventy-seven. So a denial would logically be a finding that one of these four objectives is not met.
Do we either have those or could you zoom in? Because unfortunately I cannot read that from here. Or read them if you don't mind.
Did the applicant say how many beehives?
The, the application for the farm approval did. I don't know if it's in this application.
I think there was a mention of two or three, so hives.
In all fairness, they're only allowed to have eight. Staff could have asked them to have eight and max it out.
I think they actually may have said six that they wanted to have, but you're right Evan, that there is a provision in our ordinance that there is a maximum right now of eight and it doesn't specify that you can have more in the ag zone, which is something that we should probably revisit at some point.
Yeah, given that, um, uh, bona fide farmers have already indicated that they need more than eight generally on their lot at any given time, uh, that's ridiculous, right? Like you can only have eight.
Back to, there's still, there's still a motion on the table and back to the motion on the table. If it were to need to be reviewed under the site plan, I would cite, uh, sixty-one-two-two-seven, section four, protection of environmental features on the site and in adjacent areas. As the reason that I would, uh, make a motion to not approve it.
You're, you're changing it, you're, you're asking to amend, and what's the finding?
I'm, I'm actually just throwing this to the board as a discussion before I try to make a potential amendment to the motion on, before us.
So I'm gonna be like a real procedural kind of scroll here. You've made a motion. You've got to retract it because there's a motion waiting for a second or else the chair, Paul right now, have you heard a second? Paul could say there is no second, that motion dies and then you can move forward. But once something's made, it's either gonna die or get retracted.
I retract my, uh, previous amendment to the motion.
Thank you.
And I would like to suggest a new amendment to the motion that was made. To read, I make a motion to not approve a residential home at one seventy Pendley Corner Road, City Assessor parcel ID one thirty-seven dash thirty. Citing that it is not pursuant to section sixty dash one-two-seven-seven subsection four, protection of the environmental features on the site and adjacent areas.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Okay. All is in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Amendment does not carry. Two to five.
Evan, can you go back to the, the rewording that you proposed or thought that you were hearing? Mr. Bergeron say?
I thought saying was that, he was finding that essentially this was not needed because the zoning ordinance allowed for a mechanism for a single-family home to be built on the lot. As, i.e. he was saying, there is no need to approve this lot as a single-family non-conforming, as a, as a, as a non-conforming house lot because the ordinance allows for this to be a conforming house lot. If it, if they follow, um, certain, certain criteria. I will add, the deeper discussion would be that we might consider whether or not the, the applicant could be granted a variance and a variance is very difficult to get. I would think that the applicant wouldn't be given a variance, um, by the Board of Appeals in this case because that test is fairly strict. So my assumption was that Riley was saying, well, this doesn't rise to the level of needing something like a variance. So it doesn't really rise to the level of us needing to approve it. That was my assumption about what Riley was saying. Now I have my own opinions on that, I'm just clarifying my opinion about your question.
Thank you. Cause what I heard from staff was that that probably was not gonna be a sufficient reason. But yeah, I certainly find it to be. I would be on board with that. There is a mechanism, in my opinion. So, but is staff's opinion that, that is not sufficient?
The way that this proposal was prevented, uh, presented to you in, under that provision requires you to approve it under the site plan standard. So in the contrary, if it doesn't meet the site plan standard, that's how you would deny it.
If there are changes to the site plan that was proposed.
If there were changes that made it meet the requirements. And I guess it, it's unclear to me which requirement is not met at this point. Cause they, they, they did have a choice to approach this from a different, couple of different perspectives. And this is the one that was chosen and the ordinance puts it in front of you for your decision based on those site plan standards.
Which is where my additional opinion would come in, but I was just clarifying your question.
Where we're at now though is there's a motion that was made by Mr. DeRosa that is now not amended. That's before us, right?
And we got a second on that, right? The amendment was denied, but we had a second on that?
My, my second was conditional on my, on me, on the amendment.
Correct. So we need a second on Mr. DeRosa's motion not to approve. How long do I wait? Okay. Are there any other motions?
I think, don't we have the vote on Mr. DeRosa's motion?
I didn't get a second.
It went through a series of amendments and then it was voted against.
In all fairness, I think we probably need to vote on Mr. DeRosa's, uh, motion. I, I understand what, uh, Mr. Bergeron is saying. I don't know about everyone else in the room. My understanding was that it was seconded and then there was a desire to amend. So I think that I, I'm not convinced that Mr. DeRosa's, as a point of order, that Mr. DeRosa's motion is actually not at this point. I think it's a seconded motion that's still on the table.
It was not. I said, I said only, uh, conditionally, I definitely said conditionally. I wouldn't have seconded it without changing that wording. So I think if we read back to the text, I said, uh, I would be comfortable only if it said not approved and not disapproved.
Yeah, I agree with Riley. I think my original has, has been defeated.
And Mr. DeRosa said, yep, not approved. Agreed to that, to say not approved. And then we entered into an amendment process.
That amendment was turned down, so that means there was no second because my second was conditional on the amendment. So there was no second.
One cannot make a second conditional upon amendment because amendment cannot be made to a motion unless there's debate and it's been seconded.
Well, that wasn't made clear to me and I said that my second was conditional on the rephrasing from disapproved to not approved. I think we can read back through the minutes and clear that up.
You know, to force a vote, Tim, I will second yours so that we can just say nay or yea.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion does not carry. The other option is to let it go away or?
We either make a motion to approve or it gets tabled for the discussion.
I know that there was a recommendation that we contact the bee association, but with the Auburn order only having eight beehives per land owner, um, I feel like that would not be aggressive.
I think that would be a prudent move if we were being asked to approve this based on whether or not they were using a natural resources agriculture use, but we're not. We're being asked to approve this based on whether or not we believe we meet the criteria in the site plan approval process. So we're being asked, do we? So the way this works, and we've done site plans a lot, you deny a site plan because you believe it does not meet one of the criteria. So the criteria are up here. In consideration of a site plan, the planning board shall make findings that development has made provisions for protection of adjacent areas against detrimental or offensive uses on the site by provision of adequate surface water drainage, buffers against artificial and reflected light, sight, sound, dust and vibration, and preservation of light and air. Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relation to adjacent areas. Adequacy of the methods of disposal for waste and protection of environmental features on the site and in adjacent areas. So I think what Mr. Cousins was trying to get earlier is that if there is a desire not to approve this by someone on the board, they will need to make an argument based on one of these four provisions. I think which gets to Mr. Cousins's question as to not understanding which one of those had not been met based on the board's discussion.
And I cited the one that I thought it didn't meet and was voted down, so let's make a motion.
So we need either a motion to table or?
For, for me, given that we are being asked specifically to focus on that site plan review and that they, based on the four that are being presented, I don't see a firm, strong reason to decline this based on any of those four. I can't find, I can't find an argument. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve a residential home at one seventy Pendley Corner Road, City Assessor's parcel ID one three-seven zero three zero. This proposal pursuant to chapter sixty, article four, division two, Agriculture and Resource Protection District, section sixty dash seven-eight and sixty dash seventy-nine, section five and sixty dash one-two-seven-seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? So approval five to two? That's item five. Sorry, item five, right? This is a public hearing for a site plan review and special exception for a warehouse addition at Trillium Engineering Group on Riverside Drive. I'd like staff to review the proposal.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So this proposal is for an existing business on Riverside Drive to have a pretty substantial expansion. The business is in the general business district, which, um, which a few months ago we amended to allow for more of the lot to be, to be covered by structures. And, um, that was in anticipation of, partly in anticipation of this project here. The business owner wants to expand, um, hire several more employees. It will be a single-story expansion, um, along Riverside Drive. Most of the lot, so some of the lot is in the low-risk floodplain, but not to the point where it needs to have a base flood elevation certificate because it's not at the one percent, um, annual flood risk. Part of the discussion here that we went back and forth with was about the requirement to connect, to build out the infrastructure for the sidewalks on this building. The applicant has requested a waiver to build out the sidewalk frontage on account of the nearest sidewalk infrastructure being over a thousand feet from this parcel. Staff supports this waiver request and asked in return for this applicant to indicate on their plan right of way for where a sidewalk can go in the future. So they can be aware and give permission for the city to extend the sidewalk in this area in the future because that is in alignment with the city's eventual plan. We so we, we recommend that the planning board pass this site plan with a few conditions. First of all, that the waiver be approved. Next, that no development activity will occur until bonding and inspection fees are determined by the city engineering department. That they receive all appropriate permits prior to construction. And they, um, after we wrote this, they have provided a plan that shows a sidewalk right of way. So, um, we, this has been through plan review. The departments have given their feedback and this is the recommendation that, that staff has come to a consensus on. And, um, we think it'll be a really great expansion to an existing business in Auburn. So we would welcome any questions and I believe the, the owner is here as well in case you have any questions for him.
Could you pull up the, uh, zoning map, the map for the area?
Of course.
This is one of the biggest questions here is the, other than the site plan and things like that. The sidewalk extension, yes?
I'm gonna turn off the two thousand and six overhead. I can see if I can turn on the most recent overhead.
The nearest sidewalk is just to the north of the cemetery property. We should be able to see it if we zoom in near that parking lot.
And you said that was like a thousand feet or something?
Yeah, I can take a measurement. Looks like it's here. Looks like it's here. Wait, where is it? Oh, yep, I see.
Excuse me, I'm Eric Doobie, Trillium Engineering, just here to answer any questions or anything else.
Yeah, so the ordinance, uh, staff is asking us to consider waiving the requirements to build sidewalks. Um, there are specific circumstances that are laid out under which we can, um, consider such a request. I am looking at section 46, 182 6, section 6, if anyone's following. Um, section, subsection C is with respect to residential development, so that doesn't, um, pertain here, but that the developer can, um, the developer can demonstrate to the planning board satisfaction that the nature of the development does not lend itself to pedestrian uses by the residents, employees, or the public. Um, and I've got a couple, but if you'd like me to read all of them, I can, and then you can respond, or if you'd like me to go one by one, what's your preference?
Um, so I'm not sure, we can, whatever works for you, I'm happy to do on that. Um, in this case here, if you've seen the narrative, I think we've addressed A and B specifically. Um, so I don't know if that helps clarify that in answering some of the questions.
Do you have a copy of the December 8th request with the narrative from the developer?
I do. I'm just, I'm just asking if you could kind of, I know that this is buried deep in here, and I know that, uh, there are going to be folks that aren't necessarily going to understand that process, so I'm not try, let me back up. I'm not trying to put you on the spot with any new questions. I'm just saying, can you please just remind us of kind of the basics of why you feel that it's not, why it's not needed? So basically, why it's not needed for pedestrians, residents, employees, or the public? And why the cost of building the sidewalk makes the project financially impossible? That's really, can you just kind of reiterate that for the board? I know that you guys already did this. Maybe I should have been a little more upfront, but that's why, that's why I'm asking.
That's okay, no problem at all on that. Um, so with regards to, um, A, on that, specifically when a developer can demonstrate to planning board satisfaction, the nature of the development does not lend itself to pedestrian uses by the residents, employees, or the public. I know you just said that, forgive me for rereading, just want to make sure we're in the same spot. So our response specifically was the use of, um, the existing and proposed building is basically a manufacturing warehouse facility, um, where it does not serve the public, and because of the location of facility, employees need to drive to work, or possibly could Uber, taxi, things like that. I think we could see, um, looking at the map with the cemetery, um, on one side of us, the the river on the other side, and of course, we have Gagney Precast on the other side of the street from us, that you're not going to have a lot of residential, um, or, or I'm sorry, pedestrian traffic, um, basically south of, of where the, we just showed where the sidewalk extends to. So, um, we don't see the use of the proposed building changing. And of course, as we know, once you get past basically that residential use, um, where we see, which is just north of the cemetery, that traffic tends to speed up. So you probably go from 30, 40, you know, 50 and above, so. So that was the basis of, um, specifically for A on that. Um, looking at the cost, of course, so moving on to B specifically. When the developer can demonstrate that the cost of the building, the sidewalk makes the project financially impossible. Um, for example, the developer is sufficient financing for the project except for the cost directly attributable to the construction of the sidewalks. Um, our response on this one is this project has gone through several iterations due to the current cost of construction and cost overruns. Was, we've been designing this project for a while, and of course, with the increased cost of just materials, labor, things like that, we've had to reduce some, um, some aspects of the project. Uh, we're trying to maximize this with a one-story building, but, um, this, the sidewalk cost because of the amount of frontage that we have, because when you look at the sidewalk, you don't just go in front of the building, you have to go for the entire property. Um, so, you know, with that cost, um, per linear foot, that's, um, uh, that's adding to this project of, of, you know, and forgive me, I struggle with the word impossible, because I'm an engineer, so I like to think that nothing's impossible, but, um, but anyway, that's it, just, um, it, it, my comment was it severely impacts this project. So those are the two, um, specific items that we talked about, A and B, that go to what the waiver request is, um, for this specific project. Thank you.
If I could add just a little bit more clarity to the whole discussion, initially, with the applicant, um, we did, in-house, we kind of did a, with engineering, we did an estimate. Um, it was upwards to, you know, 200,000 to design, build, um, everything, plus contingencies. Um, we felt that, you know, certainly this, uh, the sidewalk piece was, was not something that could be, you know, supported by the, the project. And given the fact that the planning board has worked on this project, I just want to remind the planning board, you've worked on this project. We, this has been a economic and community development project for over two years where we've, um, we changed the density, um, specifically in the general business zone. Um, so we've been behind this project for quite a while, um, and we really wanted a clear path, uh, for the planning board to decide over. We, we discussed a waiver and just paying it in lieu, in lieu fee. Um, but, um, staff, uh, at the director level said, we really want to memorialize the plan. I, I felt like the developer couldn't provide the plan in two days, and we would go with a waiver fee, but they did it. They gave the plan that's here in front of you. Um, so that really memorializes and captures where that connection could be for a sidewalk in the future. Um, and what that does is that gives the city the ability in the future to go for additional monies to make those connections. And it gives a basis of something to point at, hey, we're thinking about it, it's in our comp plan, it's in our, in our, um, transportation plan, and it's here memorialized on this lot as a design for a connection to be, and that gives us more opportunity for grant money in the future. So I think the end result, you know, maybe for us, for me personally, it was a little frustrating, but I think the end result, we got to think about the big picture. And this is probably our best, our best path forward. So I, I just want to add that clarity, that maybe some of this information came chopped up to the planning board, and part of that was staff's discussion on what's the best way forward, because this is a big economic driver for the city in terms of what it could produce for jobs, and to keep a viable company in the city of Auburn, we wanted to keep them here. And that's, I think that's the big picture that, that, um, that, that, you know, where I stayed, you know, where I was thinking, um, that this project was, was, was a good project.
Uh, John, may I ask a question real quick? In our, um, staff packet, when we refer to paragraph five as suggested motion in sentence C, is that what you're referring to, where we ask that there are plans in place for a sidewalk without the sidewalk having to be constructed?
That's correct, that's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Basically, the reason for that is, um, later on down the line, when the city decides that they want to construct this, um, it, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be any question about any kind of a taking of any of their frontage or parking area. So everyone's on the same page about what the future plans are.
So to be clear, it's not actually, there, as part of the build-out, it's actually not going to create the sidewalk, it's going to create the right-of-way for the city at some point to build the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay.
The, not, I'm, I'm going to be technical, not exactly, the, the sidewalk is, is actually in the right-of-way, but currently, right now, the owner is using the right-of-way as entrance to the dra, to their parking. And it really just lays out the fact that, hey, you know, you're using this right now, it's part of the right-of-way, but note that there could be a sidewalk here, we are, we are going to build a sidewalk here, so um, that acknowledges that, that process, um, and it's a good one, and I think, you know, Catherine hit the nail on the head for that, so the owner knows. But at the same time, it really draws a clear path, so the city can leverage additional monies in the future for, for grants, or for CIP funding, or what have you, so.
Do we have an estimate as to how many new jobs are going to be created by the addition? Ooh, I see a gentleman come forward.
Joe Tarter, I'm the owner of the, uh, company. Uh, so what I'll say is in 2022, we bought the company, there were four staff members working in the warehouse in the manufacturing portion of the company, of the, uh, building. We had three office workers. Today, where we've doubled the size of the volume coming out of there, we've got 10 full-time employees on average, there are times where we've exceeded that. We are completely hampered right now. I can't, I, I, I could hire another 10 people today, if I had the space to allow them to work. I've bought the equipment, I've got the equipment in the building. I'm trying to get rid of the old equipment in order to make space for the people. So my, my expectation is that I'll hire another eight people with what we see today. That said, once I have the space, I can, and I can actually allow them to work efficiently, my expectation is that I can continue to increase that.
So I'm always a big advocate for pedestrian, uh, walkability and that stuff, but it doesn't really seem a good fit here. At this, at this time, anyway, it might be in the future. So I'm, I, I think this fits with intentions, um, for me. And is fair. Okay. No more discussion, yes? Let's, um, motion to open public comment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Joe Tarter, sorry, Joe Tarter, 353 Riverside Drive, Auburn, um, is the building address, anyway. I mentioned already, the, the jobs that we have brought to the, uh, to, 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 to the building, we intend to bring more. We truly do want to remain a part of this community. The sidewalk may seem like a minimal investment. What I'll say is, we've spent several million dollars in the year and a half, almost two years that we've had it already, just to get to where we are today. And every time I spend a hundred thousand dollars on something that's not related to the business, I'm taking away working capital from my ability to bring more employees into the space. I, I need that working capital. I'd love to say I have unlimited funds, I don't, and my boss will kill me if I, if I don't get as much as I can out of the space, so again, we want to bring as much economic vitality to that piece of land as we can, and we're, we're trying to maximize what we can do with what we have available to us, so we appreciate your consideration. If there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Seeing no one else from the public wishing to speak, I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor? So, open up to the board, any discussion?
I think the project makes sense, it's in a good spot, it utilizes a property that's already being used for this purpose, it the only, the only thing we have to contend with here is the waiver for a sidewalk, and I think that, uh, the applicant has demonstrated that it, it makes no sense to, 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 to have the sidewalk here, and it, and it would make sense for the planning board to waive that requirement, so that's all I have to say.
Absolutely agree.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion for a 16,950 square foot warehouse addition to the existing warehouse and office building at 353 Riverside Drive, city assessors parcel ID at 202-005, and waives the requirements of sections 46, 182-6 of Auburn's Code of Ordinances with the following conditions, no development activity shall occur until any bonding or inspection fees are determined by the Auburn Engineering Department. All appropriate permits are received prior to the start of construction. And a updated site plan will be provided showing a sidewalk right-of-way and sidewalk detail prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Second.
Alls in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Uh, item six, this is a public hearing for a site plan review and special exceptions sought by American Development Group to revise their original site plan for Phase 2 of their Stable Ridge project. I'd like staff to review the proposal.
Yes, um, this is loading still, but I'll pull up the plans as soon as it does. So what this proposal is, if we can recall from Phase 2 of the Stable Ridge development, um, the project included four, four garage structures. This proposal is to replace those four garage structures with a, and, or like really interna sing, um, to convert, to convert the storage barn into, converting the single-story storage barn to a two-story multi-use barn with garage and storage space, a leasing office, and four apartments. Um, the apartments are initially meant for the, the staff of the, um, of Court Street, 555 Court Street, Stable Ridge, um, but also with the intention to possible, to be able to rent those out to the public um, in the future, so they're being designed thoughtfully with that in mind. Um, this is a really minimal, um, this is a really minimal revision to the plan. It does, um, slightly increase the impervious area, so it did require an amendment to the site law, um, or the site location of De- of Development Act. And, um, the city of Auburn does have delegated review authority for that, so we have notified the, the state about, about this amendment. There was also a slight amendment for the, um, traffic impact analysis. This project adds three additional trips, um, making the peak hour trips from the building to be 73, which is still below the need to have, um, a traffic, a traffic movement permit. Um, it just adds three, making it 73 total. Um, the, the existing stormwater system still satisfies this development. Um, the pump station also, um, the pump station also will satisfy this development, there were no changes that were requested there. So staff recommends that the planning board approve this, um, this proposal with the only condition being that they receive all appropriate permits before building, and then everything else for Phase 2 still applies, it's, it's just this change. Oh, here we go, here's the image of what it is. And we have both the owner and the, and the agent here, so if you have any questions, I can answer, and they, they also can.
How many staff members does Stable Ridge employ?
I don't know the answer to that, I think the, I, I think they would need to answer that question.
Hi, good evening, Jessica Klemmick. Um, so we actually employ eight, um, in total for Stable Ridge specifically, and that's American Development Group, because we're, um, family-owned, we're family-managed and maintained property. So, um, it's really my family who's primarily employed, my older sons, my husband, myself, my mother, my aunt, um, between the leasing office and the property management and maintenance team. So this would really be providing that workforce housing for, um, American Development Group.
Are those eight full-time equivalents? Or are they full-time? Or are they part-time?
Full and part-time, yes. So two are part-time and the remainder are full-time.
Any more questions for staff?
Do we have, so this is taking an existing single structure and proposing a second structure. Is the footprint of the existing single structure the same? I, maybe I missed what the current looks like.
Let me see what the change is.
And if I missed that, I apologize.
Yeah, it's a single one-story being changed to a two-story. But the impervious area, because the drive is being changed a little bit, that's increasing slightly. Um, it's, it's pretty negligible. And, um, and the, there were other, like, garage units that, that they're decided to not pursue at this time. So that's what happened. And I can try to pull up the old site plan, too, so we can see the difference.
Yeah, this, the actual building was pushed back a little bit, David, that, so there was originally...
Oh, there we go.
Towards the front. You can see it. It was, yeah, there it is. Um, it was pushed back. And then there's still, um, the barn piece is still on the front. Uh, you know, we'll call that the front, uh, the left side, looking at the drawing. And then on the backside, that's where the pedestrian access is, and then the parking associated to serve that, that entranceway.
Why is the removal of the garages to turn them into parking spaces coupled with this building change?
I think they decided that it was more conducive to their, to their business plan and where they needed to have their leasing office. They wanted to create some separation from the building or from the residences themselves. So...
I think Dave is asking a different question.
Okay, what's?
I think Dave is asking why we're seeing both of them together. And the idea is that if they're removing the parking garages and putting parking spaces that differs from the originally approved site plan. So that would, that's also part of the cha- is that the question you were actually asking?
That is the question. Yeah, I'm trying to figure why. Thank you.
Maybe they could answer the reason behind that.
So, I mean, not technically speaking, but as far as the garages go, you know, we spend quite a bit of time talking with our residents and asking our residents. We've been now occupied for just, it'll be a year in January. So we've talked, we've talked with our residents quite a bit to understand what our Phase Two residents would be, really be looking for. And we did have a plan for garages to be, I think it was four garage bays um, for each of the additional buildings. And what we've heard from our residents is really what matters to them and what they enjoy the most is onsite management and onsite maintenance staff. Because we're there for them a hundred percent of the time. And, um, we had made the decision to hold off on doing garages. And then we made the decision to do away with that altogether and found that this was really something that would better, better serve the community at Stable Ridge. Um, so that was one of the big reasons why we decided to move away with the garage, with the garages altogether. The location of the garages are not, were not planned for this specific area. So this additional, um, parking that you see here, this will just give us the ability from a maintenance standpoint, as well as the workforce that we have, to have parking space around that, um, building. And we also love the fact that it is situated away from the other residences. So it feels a bit separate, which is nice for them, but also for, um, us and our staff.
Okay, I'll seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
My name is Elizabeth Dunn. I live at 530 Court Street. I'm here to ask that you not approve the request for the Stable Ridge developer to change the size of the proposed storage barn to a two-story building with four additional apartments above. This planning board staff and board, the planning board and staff have been more than gracious with all the requests made by the developer over the past two years. I wish I was gracious with the residents who lived there before that. The proposed location of the barn is already on a high elevation. A two-story barn would tower over above much of the rest of the complex. It is not a welcome sight, in my opinion. Some of the units at Stable Ridge are being used as temporary Airbnb rentals. This does not coincide with the developer's claim previously that she is providing housing to help with the crisis in our community. Temporary housing or rentals are not housing. If units can be spared for temporary rental purposes, then the extra units above the barn are not really a necessity. There are one hundred twenty units in this complex when it's finished. Surely that is enough to house the family members that choose to live there to take care of the property. Continued requests by this developer to revisit their proposed plans set a dangerous precedent for future developers. How many times can they change and re-change and add on and take off? Is this the message we want to send to our developers? Open for business, anyone, anywhere, all the time. I really do ask that you not approve this request. Thank you.
I have supplemental documentation for my public comment I was hoping to hand out. I'm not sure who I give that to, or, there's, there's two separate pages. There's that one, and there's that one. And I got enough copies for the planning staff also. You want me to start now, or do you want the paper in front of you? Yeah, okay.
Okay, um, so my name's Ryan Smith. I live at fourteen Weaver Street here in Auburn. Um, so I want to comment specifically on the amendment to the site plan. But to do that, I have to reference a past planning board meeting, um, because the traffic information was put on there. So at the February fourteenth meeting, um, I made a comment that DOT had not approved the adjustments to Court Street, specifically regarding the center turn lane. Um, that was discussed by the board. Um, and, and in reply, staff, uh, two hours and six minutes, thirty seconds into the YouTube video, said the DOT would be involved in the redesign of Court Street. The scoping meeting will be at the end of the month. And DOT has seen rough drafts, and Stacy rightly asked the question, could the DOT deny this? And staff said, word for word, again, it's in the, it's in the YouTube video, it's highly unlikely that we're going to decline another, they are going to decline another traffic engineer's design. That's not the right answer. The right answer is yes, it could be declined. And the reason why this is important is because it was. The issue I take with this is, on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, public comment was not open. Um, I couldn't go up and say this. I was on the phone with the traffic engineers from the main DOT in charge of this project. And they stated the center turn lane did not meet their standards. It had to be twelve feet wide, not eleven feet. Therefore, creates a safety hazard for the bike lanes, because the bike lanes could only be three and a half feet wide. If you go to the other page, in the summary, this is from the traffic impact study from Favorage, Stable Ridge Phase Two. If you go to number two, I think it's the fifth line down, it says, "The analysis was conducted using the standard, um, which is compliant with the main DOT standards. And the results concludes a left-turn lane is warranted on Court Street at the side entrance." And they recommended that they add an eleven-foot center lane and leave the, um, biking lanes at three and a half feet, which is, um, again, was not a, was not approved. I don't know why it wasn't brought up. Um, but if you go on in my comment on three twenty-eight, um, we couldn't comment on it. So starting at twenty-seven of the video, Riley Bergeron said he was concerned with traffic, which was very valid. Uh, Stacy said traffic was a concern, but no longer is, and so on and so forth, and it was approved. So that leads us to today, uh, the planning board's hearing during Men Phase Two. I'm not actually here seeking a denial. I'm just here letting you guys know you really messed up. Um, and here's why. Because the center turn lane does not comply with state standards. Therefore, it's already a traffic hazard with these additional few units, and no viable solution is proposed. If you look at that traffic plan, do you see a center lane on Court Street right now? No. And we have one of those buildings coming up for certificate occupancy soon. What does that mean? This is a traffic hazard as deemed by a traffic engineer. So if anyone here is qualified as a traffic engineer to override that, I would welcome your opinion. But I have the developer's traffic engineer stating that this center ta- the center turn lane is needed. So I don't know why that wasn't a condition. I don't know why it wasn't tabled. I don't know why it wasn't denied. But it created a traffic hazard according to the special exception rule in our ordinances. Um, planning staff, after promising the traffic plan would be approved at the February fourteenth planning board meeting, never mentioned the denial of the proposed traffic solution at the March twenty-eighth planning board meeting. Why? And my last point, more units will only make the traffic issue worse. But perhaps even more troubling is the effort to suppress the facts around that the denied traffic solution and ever-worsening traffic on Court Street, which in the opinions of the developer's own traffic engineer, requires a solution that doesn't even meet DOT standards due to the width of Court Street. I called Jonathan Avante, who's our transportation director here at the city. I called him today to verify this information. What I was told was, there may be some restriping this year, but essentially it's going to create a hazard um, for bicyclists, because the lane's going to be so narrow. And the original plan is not the one they're going with. They don't even have a new plan. They have drafts. They don't know what they're doing. In addition, they said it could take a couple of years to put a multi-use path on one side of Court Street to make this no longer a hazard, kind of like how it is on Park, Park Avenue, just down the road. That's what they want to do here, and that's their solution, to get that foot traffic and bicycle traffic, traffic off of Court Street. And that will take a couple of years, and we don't even have the money for it. We don't know where we're getting this money. And it's close to a million dollars. So I just ask you guys to discuss this matter. How did this get through? Because the developer contributed thirty-eight thousand for restriping. But what about this almost a million-dollar plan that we don't even have plans for and is a couple of years out? When a traffic engineer says this is a safety hazard, that means traffic accidents. That means lack of safety. And that's my argument that this should have never been approved in the first place. But here we are, and I was just asked that you consider these facts before you. Thank you.
Seeing no one else from the public wishes to speak, I seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? Okay. Any questions to answer or deliberation?
I am curious about the Airbnb. Um, I know city staff probably has no information on that. And I don't know what the right protocol is at this stage of the meeting for clarification on that claim. But I just want to put that out there.
My thought on that is that there's no ordinance that prohibits it.
And it is.
There's no, there's no criteria that we would review that pertains to it. So it would be sort of like, you know, if I let some, you know, what if we, uh, approved a subdivision of fifty houses? And then they all got, you know, rented out. I mean, that's not part of our...
Yeah, that was my thought as well. I just wanted more voices.
And it's still bringing people to Auburn. I agree. And I think a lot of these long-term Airbnbs are for doctors and nurses that are coming in to travel to work at our hospitals, uh, since we are short-staffed. I definitely agree.
Uh, I'd like to make the comment that the, um, planning board doesn't have authority over public works, however, the city council does. So if citizens are concerned, concerned about safety, um, they can certainly speak to the mayor and the, the incoming city council about, um, solutions, so.
Is it accurate, staff, that there is no plan? And that the plan that was suggested has been declined?
So we have a conceptual layout, uh, for Court Street. Uh, the developer is required to pay the fee in lieu, uh, that they agreed to and was required by their approval prior to the certificate of occupancy for the first building in Phase Two, which is coming right up. Um, that fee, um, can then be used to do the final design and engineering for not only the improvements that they need to make, um, based on their approvals, but to accommodate the city in making much larger, more substantive approvals over a larger section of Court Street. Um, that's the way that the city asks them to approach it. So that it could be, those funds can be used to design more than just what their physical improvements would have been. Um, so it's more of a master plan, pedestrian interconnectivity for a large area on Court Street, so.
What was that fee?
Uh, it was like thirty-eight thousand something. It's in the thirty-eight thousand range.
So the, the intent is to be able to design something that's more, um, cohesive and comprehensive than just having them design their improvements.
I, I think the better question is, could we have conditioned a site plan approval upon public improvement of a public road?
Well, the components that are required to meet the needs of their new traffic, yes. Um, but we're trying to stretch those dollars to help design bigger picture improvements that will both meet city plans and expectations and the needs of this development.
I guess my, my thoughts on this, given that we've consistently talked about the concern, the traffic concerns, and the fact that we don't have, we're still in a design phase with regard to, and we still don't have, in my mind, a timeline with which we would even know when any of those improvements would start. And we're just proposing additional growth in those areas. Um, so I would be inclined to wait for some solid understanding that, and approval from main DOT, and that we actually have a plan to move forward before we continue to grow. That would be my, my thoughts on, given the traffic concerns in that area.
My question is, I'm going to go back. Can I quickly echo Mr. Tress's thoughts? I thought the traffic was a concern in Phase Two, so I continue to think it would be a concern with additional residential units. Just want to quickly echo that and jump on his back of that thought before you... I, I hear that. My question is, is that the developer's fault at this point? They've paid a fee in lieu of, and the city is supposed to be working on a plan to get it done? No, I thought that traffic was a hazard, additional peak trips to Court Street, not the traffic within the resident, within the property. Yeah, this is, we're talking about Court Street. And they paid a fee in lieu of, because they don't own Court Street, and they can't dig it up and do the work. So they paid a fee in lieu to the city, which is how things work. That's, we, we don't tell a developer, if you're going to build this, you've got to do this thing to Court Street. That's, we, that... Evan, my concern with traffic has nothing to do with the turning lane. Your, your concern with traffic is within the site itself. No, it was with, no, it was with the added peak hour trips to Court Street, which was the only, in the seven years I've been on the board, only problem corridor identified by city staff. So at the time, I opposed it because of the additional trips, peak hour trips to Court Street. So to be consistent, three additional peak hour trips, as Catherine cited in this traffic study, I would be opposed to. That has nothing to do with the turning lane, the fee in lieu of, or any of that.
So I just ha- I guess have a question maybe for the developer. With having these staff members on site, if something happens within one of the units, are they like on call 24/7? So with them being housed above the garage, are they on call to someone that has an issue within their building that needs something fixed right then and there, or? Exactly. So these staff members are coming and going more by not having them living on site. And they are there regardless because they are the maintenance team, they are the management team. So by allowing them to reside here, this will actually decrease traffic because these members are already in and out and they, they may be on call 24/7, so.
Are these designated staff residences? Or could these change to eventually be rented to private residences?
In the future, and that's why we wanted to have them approved for, um, future occupancy to the public, because yes, we didn't want to limit.
That would kind of negate the point of the people being on site. If they could, in the future, be rented out.
If in the future they're rented out to the public and no longer usable for staff, then it would add those three trips potentially, yes.
And the staff trips, like you said, because they would be offsite at that point.
And staff trips would, would stay as they normally are now, but by allowing this, it would decrease staff trips in and out of the site. Yep.
So was traffic already a problem on Court Street before this development?
I think, Mr. Blais, didn't you say that you're on the assignment of Court Street as it's the only identified problem corridor in, in the city? Is that, I think we heard that.
It certainly is a, um, an area of concern and it's something that we need to address. And we talked about, and I think that, um, Paul has been in some of these discussions with the, um, with our committee for the, you know, safe streets committee. Um, it is, it is an area that has been identified as, as something that is of concern and particularly with the school there and, and the amount of traffic, um, it certainly is something that we want to address. You know, the, at the end of the day, I think we are striving to get a good plan here. Part of the, part of, you know, part of it is that the, um, the width of the right of way and what we're proposing requires a certain amount of feet. And we're not, and we don't, we're not quite there yet. Um, and that's what, that's where the time piece that was discussed, um, that, you know, we're kind of up against. I think though, um, we've got a re- a lot, we've got engineers in the city staff, we've got a lot of smart people, um, that we can turn to. Um, I think there needs to be, uh, a temporary way to address this. I think that's more at the, potentially at the engineering level and then at the public works level, but there is a temporary solution. I think that we could paint lines, get the, a temporary 12-foot turning lane here. I think there's got to be a temporary solution to address the additional traffic now and then that we address the long-term solution through that process of potentially getting additional right of way and building what we need to build there. But, um, there is that money that's there. We haven't received that, let's be clear. We ha- we haven't received that 37, $38,000 yet because that certificate of occupancy has not been, uh, has, has not been approved yet. We're still working on the construction of that first structure. We, it just came up today in discussion with staff as we dug that out to make sure we had that in our, um, in our approval letter. And it's certainly there, we've got good teeth on that. So once we get that, we're really going to, um, put some engineers on it and try to address the issue from a holistic standpoint. But I think, I think it's, it's higher than my pay grade, but I think that there may be a temporary fix there.
I guess I have two questions in return to that answer was that I think is there another, is there any other corridor or street in the city that has been identified like that as a problem first? And second, I think this came up when we were talking about walkability in the downtown area. Um, why, and we, in your lack, or our inability to control the, the lights into Lewiston through DOT, for reasons of DOT, uh, process. Uh, do you, so is it, second question, is that $38,000 going to be used to address the issues on Court Street specifically, or just the turning lane in front of Stable Ridge?
I think, I think all of it, holistic. I think we're going to have to leverage some additional monies to address the, um, from other pots of money, but yes, that is going to, that specific location on Court Street is certainly going to be the focal point of that money being spent.
Especially between Park Ave and Fairview.
And I, you know, I did mention Court Street before, and that goes all the way down to the bridge. Um, that's, that, that whole entire corridor. Um, and then to add to your point, Riley, um, mine at Ave is certainly another one that we have high concern about, um, that we're working, uh, towards slowing the traffic down there and doing, you know, future work that makes that corridor a little bit more safer, certainly.
Court Street as well, I mean, not Court Street, Center Street as well, the same issue.
And we have DOT funded studies for mine at Ave and Washington Avenue right now to try to bring those pedestrian improvements and safety improvements to those corridors. What the fee in lieu does is allows the city to use that money to help design something that is bigger, um, than just what this development requires for physical improvements and ties into the public meetings and the desires of residents that have already expressed other concerns along that corridor. And, um, the sheltering of the tax dollars from that development, the developer does not get any of those back based on the tax increment finance district that was created. There's been no credit enhancement agreement, but it shelters those dollars so they can be used for match to DOT and federal highway funding sources to build out a much more substantial improvement.
And that, you know, I would encourage the, the board to request, um, from our transportation director, what the clear plan is and what the five-year plan is and how that lines up with our, the CIP and what, what the target projects are. Eric just mentioned, uh, a couple in a, in a broad sense, but I think he could bring a lot of the detailed, um, process and how they're approaching this, um, to kind of enlighten the board so we, we can all hear it at the same time. So just that, so to make sure that we're not, you know, presenting any kind of inaccurate information.
I think Mr. Gatto.
Could I add on this traffic point? Uh, Mike Gatto, uh, been working with the developer for quite a while here. Uh, the original submittals that we did for phase two included an off-site striping package, um, that did do the 12-foot lanes. It was a temporary, uh, thing, so there is plans for a temporary fix if it's going to take longer to do the master traffic planning that's proposed. I, I didn't know it was delayed as much as it is. So we do have a striping plan that could put 12-foot lanes in there now. Also, I want to let folks know that I think that the 73 trips is full buildout. There's still three, three more buildings that need to be built before we get to those 73 trips. So again, we had a plan for temporary striping. I think that striping plan works for Park Avenue as well as Court Street. We modified that plan at staff's request to show 11-foot lanes and apparently DOT refused that. So, um, there is a plan that could be done, temporary parking, uh, temporary striping if it needed to be done. So I just wanted the board to know that.
Thanks, Mike.
I'd like to put a quick question out. Um, John, you seem to be in the know with this. How long did it take, rough estimate, to plan the improvements that happened on Mount Auburn Avenue this summer?
That's a, that's a long process. Eric probably has more history on that than I do, but, um, it, it takes, it takes three to, three to five years to get the money, the design, acquire right of way. If you're spending federal money, it takes even longer. We're looking at a, just to give you an example, we, we, when I got here almost three years ago now, um, we had one simple crosswalk where we're, we're, uh, making a change and then we are going to utilize federal funds. We still haven't built that project yet. Um, so, uh, it, sometimes it takes a long time to get through federal highway, uh, get through acquiring right-of-way land. Um, there's an appraisal process for that. And, uh, if it's federally spent money, then it's the yellow book appraisal process and then that adds another layer of it. But, um, to answer your question, it takes a fair amount of time.
So I'm, I'm hearing three to five years, give or take. With that, how, what is Auburn's capacity to do multiple projects of that scale simultaneously? I'm guessing Auburn has the capacity to do one.
It depends if the money's available. I mean, our city engineer will tell you, if you give him enough money, he can build everything you want.
Okay, so with that information, let's go retroactively to Park Avenue. How long did that upgrade take from planning to completion?
The existing improvements on Park Avenue?
The existing improvements, that, another three to five years, is that fair to say?
I couldn't tell you the timeline. That was an earmark from the federal government.
All right, so I think you might see where I'm going. When we're looking at the improvements and changes to Court Street that were necessary prior to Stable Ridge even being a consideration due to the middle school and Auburn's growth anyway, we're looking at some calendar time before these changes come to fruition. Is that fair to say?
Yes, but we have a temporary striping plan that works in the meantime.
Thank you, but I, I think my point is coming across that these improvements to Court Street aren't going to happen in a year. They're not going to happen in two years from the time that they're planned going forward, is that correct?
We're kind of stretching here with things that we can't control.
We couldn't, we couldn't promise you that they'll happen within two years.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, John.
But I haven't been over there in a little, in a couple of weeks at least, but the temporary striping that we're talking about has not been put in place at this time, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's not required until, we could tell you the exact building, but it's not required yet based on the traffic for the occupied building.
Okay, so there is a trigger based on the buildout that will require it if we don't have something else in place prior to that?
Yes, or parts of the striping changes.
Okay.
And, and I can tell you that it is in the queue for next summer, so they're going to, they're going to do the, the striping.
Given all the concerns and certainly the voicing, even if we don't have the traffic study, knowing that there is an issue, is there, is there potential to bring that forward a little bit in an idea of goodwill, or is it really triggered off of the building? I mean, I guess I'm, especially if we're being asked to add additional housing opportunities here, granted, it could be a wash if potentially less from a traffic perspective. I get that it's tied to a certain build and occupancy house being approved, but yet everybody is complaining about the traffic. Do we have the opportunity through something like this to, to request that that be done sooner rather than later?
So, uh, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer and I think you're asking a really good question, um, but I think you, we would probably want to go back to, so that first, this first building, I don't think brings you to a, a peak, um, to the peak use that requires a traffic movement permit at that point, but I think it has, potentially it could be evaluated by a traffic engineer. To answer your question directly, you know, does it need to be do, you know, done for additional housing units to be approved on the site? So we're looking at the first 12 units essentially at this point, additional from what was approved from the first time. Does that trigger that left-hand movement? Um, I think that would be the appropriate question and I don't, I don't know that answer off the top of my head. I think it takes a traffic engineer to answer that question.
Additionally, the second phase, the traffic study said that the added peak hour trips were safe. I just disagreed with it. Like the, the traffic study for phase two said that those additional peak hour traffics were safe for Court Street.
And our, our transportation director is chiming in, he must be watching this, to say that we are working with DOT now to put the striping plan in place for next summer. Um, but he's happy to schedule a briefing on how that will all come together over time with the longer-term plans as well. Um, but the striping, um, and the traffic movements can be done safely without all of the things that the city hopes to incorporate into that corridor, um, based on the concept that we have.
Is there a particular reason why it's summer versus spring?
I think as soon as they're able to stripe in the spring is what he means by summer, but I can clarify that.
Okay.
Any more discussion? So I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the revision to phase two of ADG's Stable Ridge project located at 555 Court Street, city assessor's parcel ID 229-007. The proposed revision consists of converting the single-story barn to a two-story multi-use barn with garage slash storage space, leasing office, and four apartments with the following conditions. All appropriate permits are received prior to the start of construction.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries five-two.
Thank you. I didn't hear anybody saying anything.
Uh, moving on to item seven, this is a request from BWC Gulf Island Pond LLC for a one-year extension of the site plan approval for their Auburn solar project.
Thank you, yes. So this is, we've seen several of these over the last several months. Um, it's a simple request for a one-year extension from the solar project at, um, 224, um, East Waterman, I think. Um, and the reason for the extension is that they're waiting on their connection, um, interconnection study from CMP. Um, that goalpost has been kind of kicked down the road for a little while by CMP and the new date for the, for them to receive that study is this December. Um, it has been pushed back a few times, so it's, so they're anticipating that it, it could possibly be pushed back more, but the, but the developer, um, has done everything in their power to make sure that this project, um, commence as they stated, so they're just waiting on that, on that missing piece. Um, they also are requesting a small amendment to align, um, to align some of, to align one of the power lines along the access road. That's not part of this approval though, because that's something that staff can approve, um, on, on our own because it's, it doesn't, it doesn't change the project or, or affect the safety of the site in any way. So this is, so, um, staff is supporting and recommends that the planning board approve a single one-year extension. They have met the requirements for this kind of request and, um, we feel like it is a reasonable and, um, appropriate request to make.
Any questions for staff? Yeah. Do we need public comment on this? No. No, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Okay, so I can just ask for vote for any discussion.
I make a motion to approve a one-year extension until December 13th, 2024, granted to PWC Gulf Island Pond LLC under section 60-1308. All conditions of the letter of approval included in this packet apply.
Second.
All's in favor. Item eight is workshop to discuss possible zoning and text amendments for future consideration.
Yeah, so this is really just a discussion, it's for you guys. I'm just, the staff report is really meant to prompt you and remind you of a few, of a few items that we've discussed and you've put on the table to be brought up at a later time. And this discussion is really to see, to gauge what direction you would like to go in, to maybe start to lay out a timeline and to, to just see if there's any other requests that you'd like to make. So one thing that we put on the table recently, just for, for folks watching and listening, is the Vicarry Road discussion. We had discussed amending the zoning on Vicarry Road from Urban Res to T42B. The planning board asked for an amendment to have a connection between the other T42B neighborhood really close by and the Vicarry Road neighborhood, but that didn't quite align with the comprehensive plan on, because the comprehensive plan calls for density closer to eight, to eight units per acre and T42B calls for 16 units an acre. So the planning board's preference was eventually to, to change the zoning to something closer to eight units per acre down to where South Main Street crosses with the Turnpike. And that was tabled, we were busy, so we're coming into a new year and we can think about bringing that up again if you'd like. Another discussion that we've had in the past is after amending the zoning of the parcel on Andrew Drive from Ag to Suburban Residential, the board discussed wanting to extend that zoning of Suburban Residential to the other parcels along Andrew Drive because it would be the extension of kind of a historic village core as called for in the comprehensive plan. And so I know there was interest in bringing that up at one point, so that's another thing. We're also overdue for discussion of LD 2003. Right now, it is state law, there are some of our ordinances that may be in conflict with that state law. So as staff, we're starting to see requests that we really don't know how to answer because our ordinances haven't quite caught up with that, with that law. So we're also overdue to, to evaluate some of those and see how we can update it to be conforming with the law. And so we just hope that you can direct us on any questions you have, steps you'd like us to take moving forward, or any other zoning amendments, texts or map amendments that you would like us to consider that I didn't bring up here.
And I, I would just add what we're hoping to do if there are some that we missed, we'd like to get them on the list. We do intend to share these same topics with the city council on January, I think it's second or third, whatever the first meeting is in January, and make sure that we have some good direction. So we're prioritizing the things that the council wants us, the staff and the planning board to work on. And I think LD 2003 is one of those that we have to work on, that we would recommend prioritizing over some of the others if we're not going to work on all of them at the same time.
I would, I would agree with Eric on that, that LD 2003 is certainly something that we, as a planning board, I think should really focus on. And as staff, we are, we are actually getting site plans and things, assuming that LD 2003 is, is law. So it's, it's, it's going to be some difficult discussions that we have to have because we can't get in front of our ordinance, even though it's state law. And that, in addition to that, that exposes the city a little bit to, you know, someone taking us to court if we're not complying with state law. So if I would say anything is low-hanging fruit, it's, it's the LD 2003.
I think, yeah, I think Andrew Drive and the East Auburn Village Plan are part of the comprehensive plan. Either creating a new suburban zone or updating our current suburban zoning text language to match the comprehensive plan. Development of language and implementation of the conservation zone to replace the AGRP zone within Lake Auburn watershed. Move from low-density country residential to rural residential in strips outside of the watershed in accordance with the comp plan. And then I think LD 2003, we don't often do ad hoc committees, but I wonder if it wouldn't, or if staff feels comfortable just identifying things, I wonder if it wouldn't help to have a day or two where staff is able to sit down with a couple of planning board members and just really go through, reading through Chapter 60 and just kind of trying to flag stuff. I don't know if, I, I say that only because that's something where the planning board could help staff, because that's a lot of work to go through.
Very helpful.
I'd certainly be, I like that list out and I appreciate the, the thought put forth for that. I know certainly for, in the paperwork with regard to, to one, we've talked about it many times about looking for this, you know, staff to come forward with a recommendation as to how we drop to eight, but yet do it from, since we're not doing T42B in that green area, doing it from Vicarry South. So I, I wouldn't want to not continue pushing that, given that we've talked about it a fair amount of times. I also am in agreement with regard to the second, specifically with regard to Andrew Drive. That was something specific that I know came forward when we approved that other lot. There was a request to potentially leverage and look at that as a, at a broader level. Certainly, I know Mr. Bergeron, you mentioned that that was something that you would rather see, so I'd, I would like to make sure that that's in there as well. So. Does that list help?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you. We can put that together and we will share it with the council and go from there.
Actually, can I ask one, just one more thing? I don't know if the board wants this. I would like an accounting of what in the comp plan that would be under our purview has either already been accomplished or we're already processing and what hasn't been started? Not that we would start all those things at once, but I think if we had some kind of accounting of that, that might help us kind of think long-term in terms of what we might choose to take up when we have the time.
That'd be a fun project for me. I can do that.
The last time we did that was prior to the 21 update, so.
Oh, I also think that we need to do our bylaws at some point. I think we're overdue.
Does that sound like a fun project, Catherine?
Less, less so.
So we're still under the. So I guess, I guess Eric, one question I would have is, given that you're going to bring the list obviously to, in front of council to get their thoughts as to what they would like to do, it doesn't preclude us from being able to bring forth something if for some reason there is a conflict?
The, the planning board can certainly initiate a zone change on their own as well, if that is.
It does, thank you.
Sounds like sta, it sounds like staff thinks tackling LD 2003 compliance is not only emergent but also maybe worthwhile doing now rather than later. How does the planning board feel about sending like a two-member ad hoc? Two-member ad hoc committee just to help staff go through and read and help flag things? There's so much reading to do that it's nice to have some.
I'd like it and I'd volunteer for it.
I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
Is, is there any desire for us to ask council if they would like to have a member or two sit with those board members? I don't know if that would make it harder to schedule or if that would help make sure some of the council.
I think that would be the purview of the, the council. I think we could make a, a two, I think, but three sounds great, but once you start getting three now, you really get into schedules. But if we have two folks that are authorized to work with staff specifically on that and council chooses to sort of send a couple of council members, I think that that could work well and if they don't, then they don't.
We can check with the city manager and council on that.
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate the urgency. I think it's worthwhile.
Yep.
Look forward to it.
I make a motion to create an ad hoc committee specifically to help staff identify areas of non-compliance within the zoning ordinance and LD 2003 and to further authorize the chair to appoint two members of the planning board to sit on the ad hoc committee.
Second that.
All's in favor?
All right, so you guys can let Stacy know she has to choose someone.
Love that.
Thank you. You guys finished?
I have a couple of miscellaneous items after the public comment if we wanted to stay in the order. Just a quick mention.
Okay, we're all done with this, right? Okay. Would anybody, I open public comment, would anybody from the public like to come up and Seeing none, we'll close public comment. So we're on to miscellaneous items?
So just a quick feedback from one of the questions that the board asked earlier tonight. The reason that the striping won't happen first thing in the spring on Court Street is there's a, a public meeting on the striping and a pavement rehab project for Court Street that'll be in January. And what we want to do is to avoid the grinding of Court Street to change the line work by sort of piggybacking on that pavement rehab which resurfaces Court Street. And the plan is to have the striping change for a safety project that coincides with that from Minut Avenue through this project area that we discussed at Stable Ridge, all the way to Union Street. So we're really, we're trying to coordinate different funding sources and the timing so that we end up spending less local dollars on a sort of bigger improvement. And our, our transportation director is really doing a good job of pulling those things together and we're, I think we'll see that over the next couple of years, major improvements to our, our troubled corridors.
Thank you, and I certainly appreciate either you having reached out or someone watching and providing that feedback.
Yep, we didn't ask for it, it came, so that was really helpful.
Like, oh, people are watching.
There's more of that than you know at these.
Yeah, it's Fast and Furious today.
And the last piece is, I had emailed the board and we are looking at a legal training, either January 16th or January 30th with our city attorney, if that's something that the board could accommodate for the majority of the members.
I'd prefer the 16th, 30th's my birthday. I'd rather not be there.
Fair enough.
Well, you know, sometimes. But I could be if I have to. I know I was here Valentine's.
Is the 16th generally workable for other board members?
That's fine.
I'm open either date.
Doesn't matter.
Are you sure you don't have a preference, Tony?
I definitely don't have a preference.
16th it is?
Great, thank you. And lastly, thanking Tony for her service on the planning board. This is your last meeting. But thank you very much. It has not been an easy term for board members. You guys have tackled some really challenging issues and thank you for fitting that into your busy life for the time that you did.
Thank you so much. I enjoyed it.
I certainly echo that sentiment, thank you. Appreciate your expertise from, and perspective from your experiences.
I, I want to know why we, we don't have a plaque for you. Outgoing city council members that got a plaque, you know.
I can draw you something.
We'll, we'll make sure.
Put it in my office with all my other plaques.
You can have your name tag.
We can make sure you have something to remember your time here.
Uh, the 16th, is that at six o'clock?
Yes, yeah, unless the board wants to try to do it a little bit earlier than a regular meeting, but otherwise we would plan on six, the regular time.
Oh, is there, is it, I know the planning board had talked about kind of wanting more regular training. Is this part of regular training or is there, is this anticipation of something or?
So, yeah, the main municipal training, which I think you just took recently, number of other board members have been through that training, is very general and broad and I think they're more cautious about general guidance rather than answering specific questions. I thought that we got a lot out of the very specific training from our city attorney that would represent the board if there was a challenge to the decisions.
I, I agree, that was really helpful and useful, uh, two, two years ago?
Last year.
It sounds like the council liked that format last time, the manuals that came out of it, so we wanted to try to do that again with new board members coming on board over the next month.
I did find that it was really helpful, being a new board member myself, so thank you.
I think it's helpful being an old board member. I always learn something when I go to the MMA things.
Absolutely. And I have more experience now to kind of soak in the, what she's talking about, or whoever it is at that time. Is this where we ask the transportation director to come visit us?
If you, I think it would be worth an update. There's a lot of moving pieces right now on some really substantial corridors in the city, so if you're open to it, we'll take that as an okay to work that into a meeting in the coming month.
Yeah, I think as a workshop, probably present it as a workshop to the, to the board. I think it'd be appropriate, give them some time to prepare and.
And I think ahead of the capital improvement plan being presented to you in March or April, it would make sense to already have that background.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? We're adjourned.